And let me say whereas Craig Price joined the City of Moorestown Parks and Recreation Department as its Director on March fifteenth, nineteen ninety-three. And whereas Craig Price earned an degree from the University of Tennessee in Knoxville and received the distinction of Certified Parks and Recreation Professional through the National and Tennessee Recreation and Parks Associations. And whereas during his years with Moorestown Parks and Recreation Department, Craig enhanced our community by implementing numerous park improvements, including the creation of three disc golf courses, new athletic fields at Wayne-Hansford Park, two dog parks, and the construction of new city parks. And whereas Craig Price oversaw the construction of new play equipment to add fun and enjoyment for our youngest citizens, including a skate park at Frank Lorino Park, new playground equipment at several parks, the addition of a splash pad at Fred Miller Park, and the newest addition of Jolly Park. And whereas his hard work and dedication helped grow both the youth and adult athletics and event programs, providing valuable recreation opportunities for our citizens. And whereas Craig plans to spend his retirement enjoying the outdoors, officiating youth athletics, and continuing to make a difference in the lives of others. And whereas following more than twenty-nine years of service for the people of Moorestown and Hamlet County, Craig Price retired from the city's employment on June first of this year. And now therefore I, as the Mayor, Gary Chesney, on behalf of the City Council of Moorestown, Tennessee, do hereby congratulate and commend Craig Price for his dedicated service to our wonderful community and wish him health, happiness, and well-being for the future. Here's a bag of blue paper. Council there, and there's also a gift from the, from the city. And if you want to show them what all that is, I said to you. Craig, thank you for your service. I'm among many who can recommend the Parks and Recreation UK and want to this town and will go forward. Thank you very much.
I'd like to end, Craig. Thank you, thank you. I just like to thank you all. This body has always been so gracious to me, the ones that first years out of here through today. I thank you so much, but it's been a joy to get to work amongst the great people. And so many people have helped me along the way, pushed me, pulled me, whatever. But I'm gracious to them. There's so many citizens, countless citizens, and football coaches and the players and not only the city of Moorestown, but sixteen years in Roger, not many people get to start a Parks and Recreation Department. I was fortunate to get to do that. And, but I'm so grateful to so many people who've made a difference in my life. And hopefully I may want to, and there's, you know, people will forget what you said, they will forget what you did. But they'll never forget how you made them feel. And I've always worked hard to make people feel good about themselves, I mean. And I thank God bless each and every one of us. Thank you.
We open the floor for citizen comments about items that are on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to speak and it's another question-answer session. The floor is now open for comments. On behalf of my family, thank you. See no one come forward, we'll close this portion of the meeting and move on to the regular items on the agenda. The first is a public hearing. Careful, this is a public hearing only. There's no vote required at the end of it. If there's a public hearing required pertaining to public chapter eleven oh one regarding plans of services and progress of orders for ordinance number three six nine eight, which is adopted last November third of twenty twenty-one. It's the annexation of property located east of Norwich Chapel Road and having the Hamlet County Taxable Parts IP numbers you see there with the zoning designation of high density residential district are included.
All right. In accordance with eleven oh one, which is the loss and dig picture annexations, the city's required to hold a party meeting regards to all the annexations within the city. This particular property is approximately twenty acres. It's located on Norwich Chapel Road. Development tends to developing senior living facility. City currently provides all services to the property. Lot of sewers already available. And then the city council grant by an update to attach.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? And then we'll close this public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to gratify and update the plan of services for this area.
Motion, Mr. Pedego?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second, Smith. Any questions or comments? Period done? Let's vote. And that public services is included. We have one more public hearing, and that is for ordinance four seven one two. It's an ordinance to close the vacated certain rights of waves within the city of Moorestown. This proportion of Tennessee Avenue provided by justice from the intersection of York Avenue, the general location being shown on the attached exhibit.
Yes, Mayor, property owners, six twenty-seven, requesting this right-of-way closure for undeveloped portion of Tennessee Avenue. This requested portion is at the intersection of Tennessee and York. It appears so at one time to be, or at one time it's going to be utilized for future development. However, this area developed out of use of the stub and is now just an undeveloped rag strip that leads to the back of another piece of property and another subdivision. Since this undeveloped right-of-way stub can no longer be utilized for future development, staff recommends approval of this right-of-way closure request. And planning commission did vote as opposed to request that there may be monthly.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this ordinance?
So how does this property go up there?
I just said, it'd be split between the two property owners. And I talked with both property owners. I think they were trying to reach an agreement before it's go solely to one. But as far as the city, we'll just give up any right to let it put claim it to the center point. Other than that, we're not going to have it around very much. It'd be up to their, I mean, somebody's taking care of it.
Somebody's taking care of it now.
Yeah.
That's my question. Thank you.
And there was a question, since it's a stub out, it only, it still just applies to the two property owners on either side?
Uh, yes. I mean, that would ultimately be between attorneys and surveyor. But typically it's just at a center point of the avenue.
Can that be built upon?
Uh, no, it would be just added to the existing two parcels. And then if they want to add, you know, add up on their, add to their house or add accessory building, it would have to be whatever setbacks we.
Right. But it's not large and have to build a house, huh?
Oh, no, no, sir. First look in the old subdivision class is about twenty-three hundred square feet if you were to take the whole portion.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
If the two owners would take possession of it, they'd immigrate and property taxes, I guess.
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and let her take the motion that we adopt this ordinance. Do we have a motion? Motion Smith. Is there a second? We have a second. Any questions to the council on this one? I don't know if those are already raised. Period done? Let's vote. That motion carries. We have one resolution today that being twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, a resolution of the Council of the City of Moorestown to enter into a contract with TDOT for the construction of an industrial access highway under the Industrial Highway Act of nineteen fifty-nine.
This resolution, should you approve it, will begin the process to work with TDOT to extend progress parkway. In the East Tennessee Progress Center, the road is requested would get access to lot twelve, which we've recently created, and lot two, which is by a number of the Pan-Bruel site. TDOT has discussed this with us and is encouraging the application. If it is approved, it will be one-hundred percent funded by TDOT. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
Absolutely.
Motion, I hear. Is there a second? And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Period done? Let's vote. And the motion carries. We have introduction of two ordinances on the first reading plan. First, forty-seven thirteen, an ordinance of the city of Moorestown adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year, which begins July first of this year, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, we refer to as FY twenty-three. Is there a motion? Well, Tony, you have any comments?
Yeah, this, this is the first reading, the two or three readings for the annual budget plan. This is the year that was taken on July first. We've had a number of workshops to get us to this point. We will continue to make small adjustments and refinements as we go forward. Matter of fact, following our regular meeting today, we'll have the workshop to discuss some of those opportunities. At the next meeting, you'll have, have this on-site reading with the public hearing as well as a resolution for nonprofits and some other documents that go on with the annual plan. We feel like we got a good, good plan to book before we recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
Absolutely.
Motion Pedego, is there a second? We have a second. Any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Mayor. So today, we can make some adjustments to the budget in the work session.
That's right. You can make an adjustment in the work session and make those final modifications on Saturday.
And we have a work session on June seventeenth. And we could, I would like to reserve some time in case we need an extra work session. I know we're doing, we're going to talk about landing on the seventeenth, but I'd like to have a reserve or mention that in case we need to talk, have another work session on the budget before we pass on the twenty-first final reading, that we have that option on the seventeenth.
Then that schedule is fairly full. If council's willing to add time to the, to the meeting, that's something to prepare.
To do that, then move the work session beyond the twelve o'clock hour?
I would expect that to be changed.
Is council willing to do that?
I think we'll know that after the work session today. I'm just wondering if we can put that out there because if it does mean that we open the other twelve o'clock hour, I think we owe it to making sure that we have everything in the budget that needs to be discussed.
All right, so you want to talk about that after the meeting today, then?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments? Period done? Let's vote. And that motion carries and is set for public hearing on the second vote on June the twenty-first. We have ordinance three six eight nine point oh five. An ordinance, companion ordinance three six eight nine is to the last year's budget of FY twenty-two, necessary to appropriate additional funds in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars from the JAG grant, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars for the appropriation of revenues exceeding estimates, appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act grant funds for projects previously approved, the transfer of funds to the General Capital Project Fund for resourcing tennis courts, and the decrease to appropriations relating to the timing of the airport projects.
This ordinance is part of our annual cleanup of the budget at the year-end, preparation, closing the votes, and moving into the audit that will be coming here this summer. As you indicated, recognize several areas of revenue that were not initially anticipated, as well as the schedule of certain capital projects. This is a routine part of the process of getting ready to close the votes. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation? Motion, I hear. Is there a second? We have a second. Any questions? Period done? Let's vote. And that motion carries. And this also set for public hearing on June the twenty-first. We have a number of bids and contracts to deal with, the first of which is to approve the amendment to the agreement with Tyler Technologies Inc. to allow for the purchase of Tyler Cashereum and Tyler Payments functions and authorize the city administrator to execute the same.
Tyler is the manufacturer of many of our software applications. This particular piece will allow it to be better integrated. It will provide for more efficient operations and a better customer experience. The cost is twenty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. We think it will work well. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept that recommendation?
Absolutely.
Motion Pedego, we have a second. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Period done? Let's vote. That motion carries. Next is the approval of the service agreement with Tyler Technologies for licensing and service, providing an electronic citation program and authorize the city administrator to execute the same.
This is the program we've been talking about for a number of years council previously authorized some additional add-ons of fines in city court to help finance the project. We supplemented those funds with funds from the federal ARPA funds. This is for the police department. It's a planned project. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation? Over to motion, Smith. We have a second. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Period done? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the to acknowledge purchase, or knowledge purchase order twenty-two double oh two five five zero, to purchase eight police department vehicles. Oh, I gotta check off. I guess you are. I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, to acknowledge the proposals received for towing services on May seventeenth and authorize the city administrator to establish and execute an agreement with Casper's Body Shop and Wrecker on the basis of the advertised RFP and pricing presented in the company's proposal.
Council aware, we went out previously and saw the proposals for this project, or, and we only received one, so we went back out to the market. We received three, the review team has written three proposals, Casper can now talk with each of the raiders who've gone and got a good proposal.
Is there a motion to accept this second? So, motion, I hear. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor, I talked to Mr. Eller and I was telling him I looked up the RFPs this morning. We were talking about guaranteeing the price for two years. I couldn't find that in there that it's going to, and it needs to be guaranteed for two years. I may have overlooked it.
Are you saying the RFP, why is it?
I think the RFP said that it could only be for two years.
I know that it asked for the cost of this proposal. I'm not sure of the precise length.
Because one of, one of the presenters or proposers mentioned that the price will be based upon might increase due to gas, gas prices, et cetera. No one else mentioned that. And I was, we had talked about the fact that that was going to be, it's not a make or break, but it is a point that we need to know. If Casper has been putting in, I think, a hundred dollars and then this, the other things that he does, a hundred miles and something like that, then we need to know, are they going to be able to go up? I don't expect anybody, but you need to go up at some hundred dollars.
What is your question, Mayor? You say the one that recommend guaranteeing the price?
That's when I understood the city was going to ask them to guarantee their price for two years. And I don't know that it's in the contract.
So the city didn't ask them to guarantee the price?
I didn't find it.
Uh, in the overview section, which is page five of fourteen of the RFP, says upon the approval of the selected proposal, the city of Moorestown seeking an initial contract to cover approximately a two-year term that begins after city council approval and continues through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The city reserves the right, it's sole option, to extend the term of the contract for an additional two-year term or to seek new proposals as it deemed appropriate.
And in that, it's folded in there to understand that they can't raise their prices?
That is a page that they all initial with their, I mean, that's expectation that they're, they have a proposal of what their prices are going to be and then they're going into offering proposals that our expectation is to enter contract, it's going to be a two-year term.
It could end up in a four-year contract. It's way forward some inches. Is that correct?
Uh, where we have it written, yes.
Take the idiot sign that. Who would take an idiot to sign that? They even know they're going to have four years down the road next time, so. I don't know. I, I'd like.
Follow the argument. Is somebody in King and.
I'm not saying that. Read that line in for us, Andrew. Read that last line.
Uh, the city reserves the right, it is sole option, to extend the term of services for additional two-year term or to seek new proposals as it deemed appropriate.
So that means if they sign in, Lauren, correct me if I'm wrong, if they sign in on today's rates and the city chooses to exercise this for a two more year term, we can hold them to that. They dealt twice and they can't change their price. Is that correct?
Based on, right, what this proposal says. Now, this is their response to the request for proposal or has it been, I think typically they present to us a contract or they say, hey, you won't draft the contract.
Right, right. There's nobody against the day and today's fuel market prices. I can't guarantee my prices to rise. You know what I'm saying? You can't do it.
So what do you want to do?
I think that's what we should do.
Just like what?
To say either they're in for two more years or they're out for two more years. You don't want to say they'll down it out. That's not fair to them. But if you're going to do that, you're going to touch it out three figures.
My question is, are we asking them to stay steady in their prices for two days, the initial two years for their gas prices?
Well, if that's not happening, they'll have to, exactly.
The, the, this is bringing right now, this reviewing the proposals, we select a proposal, we negotiate an agreement, the agreement will define the prices of the firm.
We didn't not have it. So we just subject to end or whatever. Okay, that's fine. I don't have problem with that. But I'm just saying, with fuel prices that are predicted over six dollars or five or six dollars, there's no way, I don't see that anybody can guarantee something like that when they don't know what the fuel prices are going to be.
It's, it's our job to represent the citizenry?
I agree. That's the same, but it's also our job to make sure they don't blow that business without a brain.
It's, it's our job to represent the citizenry of Moorestown and to do it in the best manner that we know how. If somebody comes to.
That, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Gasoline goes to ten dollars a gallon. And they came to the city council and said, look, it's costing us twice to pick up a car for what you're paying us. This council would certainly.
Motivate.
Motivate that contract at the time.
Okay, would we? Do we have to? We don't have to. It's, it's not, we don't have to, but who's saying we would?
I'm saying we would as long as I'm on this council.
I know you are, but there's seven people on this council.
I don't believe anybody else that wouldn't do it.
I think we'll vote for this contract. We're saying we're going to do that.
Yeah, I think that needs to be added in at the end of it.
I don't think we should.
No.
Obviously, I'll just vote no in exchange for me to later be known later. Why I vote no, because, yeah, I can do that. I've got control right here. The next, I've got an extension or a no. And, yes, I.
You have the hit so right, of course.
Well, that was because the way I read it, the way I was, I was informed is that it was locking the individual in to whatever they proposed in this. And you're telling me that then there is a next step to this contract? So if I put down a hundred dollars, then it's still a negotiable amount?
It would not be our intention to negotiate on the prices that they submitted.
And I only ask that because one, one of the proposers said, and that was, that was not, no one called me about that part. I read that this morning, that they said that they couldn't guarantee the prices because of the potential for gas prices to increase. And so I just think it's, you know.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I got one more comment. I don't think it's fair to the person. It could be a M because we can lock M and legal device for four years because it's the good old boy system. I don't think that's the way. I ain't looking for any. But that's all right. Let's call for a vote.
I don't, I don't understand what you mean, the good old boy system.
Yeah, what?
It, it doesn't matter. Call for the vote.
Well, you made a comment that is.
You made a comment in your group's going to adjust.
That's no, that's no.
Call for the vote.
Any, anyone else have any other comments? We ready to vote? Let's vote. Motion carries.
We'll have to know what it is, so I'll write back to you now.
Okay, that's the one I skipped. We're ready to go to the next. This is the knowledge purchase order two two zero zero two five five zero, purchase eight police vehicles under the state contractors budget.
These are vehicles that are budgeted in the current year that will close at the end of this month. Uh, these are planned purchases against approved in your budget. They're, we anticipate ordering SUVs. Uh, we certainly do need to get the vehicles. We pray that they can be delivered and we recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept that recommendation? Question, Smith, is there a second?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this one?
Yes, sir. As the ones we voted in last year, how many of them were saved?
I, and last time, we were behind three years for a while. I think we're two years behind or something. Now, is that a fair assessment?
We're closing, you know, we have part of the order from the second year. Yep, part of the.
How many vehicles are we covering about our own back order?
I'd be afraid even with in advance, sir, I believe we have four of the Tahoe's that you folks approved at the last. And then we have then the remainder.
We had the order delivered. There were some problems with the order. The vendor had to come back and take the vehicles back. They have since then, we have received approximately half of that order. I believe we have four of those original Tahos. The reason for the SUV is that's what, that's the only police vehicle that's being built right now. I'm correct on that, right, doing, it's being built. So to answer your initial question, we have the vehicles are built. They, they've been here, they're taken back for modified for the appropriate type service they would be in. And those vehicles, those last four, should, we hope, be here by the end of this month. That will catch us up through twenty-one. The vehicles, if you approve these vehicles tonight, that will be for the twenty-two order. And then as, once the new budget is approved, we will turn around and order.
For twenty-three.
For twenty-three. So we're possibly one year behind in the orders, but we still have half the order left from the Tahoe from twenty-one.
I got you.
I know it's confusing. It's confusing elsewhere.
That's the thing about it, because we've appropriated plenty in, in the last two budgets for something we can't receive.
Yes, and it's all.
And it's everywhere. It's not just here. I understand.
Yes, sir. It's been on the vendors. And what happened with the Chevrolet Tahos, the Chevrolet built the vehicles and the vendors could not get the parts for the RFP.
Yes. Thank you very much, Chief.
Any other questions or comments? We ready to vote? Let's vote. That motion carries. Next is the authorization of the city administrator to execute a work authorization with Roble, Klepper, and Call for engineering services related to phase five of the Greenway.
The council will recall that we recently added a slate of engineering firms to a pre-qualified list of engineers. We've worked up master service agreements for a number of them. This firm is one of those of the projects we're asking for approval. Task order is, as you indicated, for phase five of the Greenway,
which will extend from where we are at Freddy Kyle to Davis Street. This is a T-DOT-funded project and our pay cable will lead us through that process, we recommend.
Is there motion to accept that recommendation? So, motion they heard, do we have a second? We have any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, let's vote. And motion carries. Next is the approval of a proposal from Madder and Craig to provide professional services for the NEPA phase of the Eastmore Rehab Project in an amount of nine thousand dollars.
Council will remember that this is a T-DOT-funded project to improve Eastmore Boulevard. Uh, T-DOT's local program is going back to reviewing their specifications and are requiring additional water resource assessments from a different level than what is previously being done, that's the reason for the work before you. It is something that, that they are doing across the state, it is a requirement to approve and we recommend a vote.
Is there motion to accept this recommendation? So, motion Smith, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Uh, any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. Motion carries. Next is the approval of a contract with T-DOT for a project described as SR thirty-two, that's US twenty-five East South Avenue, Crockett Parkway in the intersection at Progress Parkway and Thoroughbred Run Road. The uh ID number is shown there before you, this is in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred dollars.
Council will remember that this is a T-DOT improvement to the entrance to our Tennessee progress uh center, the uh, the improvement will improve the intersection there with that somewhat awkward intersection with the visualization. Uh, T-DOT identified that we needed sidewalks on the project and that is obviously the state funding. That is the reason for the nineteen thousand dollars that you had before you. We had previously approved our resolution participation, this is the contract, please, we recommend a vote.
Is there motion to accept that recommendation? So, motion Bivens, do we have a second? Need a second? Got a second. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, where is sidewalk going to be? It's along the uh, the progress parkway there at the intersection near Wyans.
Where is it going to connect?
It, it goes across the intersection, so you have to go to the McDonald's on the other side of the highway.
Is it going to go down edge of the park?
No, it's not.
It just connects those corners, the line goes to McDonald's.
Right there at the intersection, they realize you have. Cause you're going to be a walkway between the north and the south and traffic. So you have to walk from, from McDonald's to Wyans.
Any other questions or comments?
Nineteen thousand is the city's prime cost here, but the total project and the intersection, what is that, what's the ratio?
We're paying all of the sidewalks, cause that's not allowed in the project, I forget the total project amount, but it's hundreds of thousands.
But, but this.
T-DOT, I'm sorry, T-DOT funding steps sidewalks.
T-DOT, T-DOT will funds all the road, all the civil improvements, they cannot approve sidewalks and these types of projects, that's the reason they have to. Excuse me, this is a temporary interruption.
Thank you.
You good?
Yes.
Let's vote. That motion carries. Next is the authorized city administrator to execute an interlocal agreement with the Moorestown Utility Commission for the use of four million dollars of the American Rescue Plan Act funding through the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for the design and construction of a water tank and related distribution lines in the vicinity of exit twelve of I A one.
Council will recall this is our big project that we're going to accomplish with the federal allocation of resources to the ARCA program. Uh, this will build, as you indicated, a, a water tank and associated mines that will improve water flow in particular fire protection for that industrial area as well as spur additional commercial development. This agreement has been reviewed by the Moorestown Utility Board, uh, they have, have approved it, we recommend you approve it as well, allow us to move forward with the project.
Is there motion to accept this recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Motion here.
And I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, got a second, got a second, any comments?
I, and my uh information is that receiving this money, the sanitary system will not have to increase rates until they have a bond issue that comes due, that they pay off short after this, that will take care of the expenses they have, so this will prevent a rate increase at this time. That's it.
Any other comments? We ready to vote? Let's vote. That motion carries. And we have of course, a change order, this being change order number three with Leon Williams Contractors for the City Hall Interior Renovations in the amount of forty-five thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Uh, as you indicated, this is the third change order for the project renovating this building. The source of the funding is the federal ARCA funds as we've been discussing earlier in the meeting. Anyone that's been involved in renovation projects knows that there are things that come up that are unanticipated. These are the type of things we're dealing with here, uh, this will primarily be within the uh police administrative wing upstairs, uh, this is something we feel like is necessary for the project forward, we recommend a vote.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation? Motion they heard? We have a second, we have a second, any questions or comments?
Mayor, this is the one that we were talking about earlier in finance or alluded to. Where the painting is nineteen thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars, it was taken out and then put back in and then replacing lighting, uh, four fixtures and then eight candle lights, uh, fifteen thousand dollars. I'm wondering if some of that, um, you know, we need, does all of that need to be done? I know Mr. Pedego has mentioned at some point, um, about, uh, it's nice to do a lot of things.
We're not paying for it, right? It's the federal, federal dollars.
Well, and we, we talked about it earlier, the three hundred thousand, we're going to move over and send this, um, the money to the ARCA money. We just need to be sure that we don't use that as a drawdown account, because I believe that's weird, that money is going to go to the three hundred thousand, is that correct, Tony?
That's correct, and that is federal, that's additional federal money, it's not application of a project. When we lay out the project plan, we need to do the uh, variances in the cost higher or lower. We do, we have made adjustments and that, that's, what we're doing now is part of that process.
And I just wanted to make a comment that we are really investing and we have, we, we tally it all up and I think that would be a good thing to do, is everything we've done is called preventive maintenance. Some of it, and some of it is because of the reallocation of office space for different departments and uh, I think it would be really good for the council to know exactly how much we spend on the, the pointing, the brick outside, the washing, the plaza, the A C and everything, and a lot of that, we, we have facilities, city facilities that need to be taken care of, same thing we've done with the building of the new public works, we're building the landing. Uh, we're looking at doing another department, uh, fire station at, on Thompson Creek Road in some way and some way, so I think we, we're going to do this for one on all of the, you know, the city facilities and assets that I've mentioned, we need to look at all of our city assets and facilities to make sure that we maintain the same life.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. I have a motion here. Next is the approval of the Community Development Block Grant, the annual matching plan for the twenty-two, twenty-three planning year.
Uh, council's aware, we're entitled, the city receives that annual application for the CD DT grant program. Uh, we go through a process of looking at various projects. This is the actual plan that's recommended for, for your approval, that was presented in your budget, it's part of, part of the down for, for public comment. It is along the same lines we've done in previous years with regard to the housing renovations uh and facade renovations downtown, we recommend that we approve this, move over to the random program.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation?
So, the.
Motion Pedego, we have a second. We have a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. And we have the approval of change order number two with Adams Contracting LLC for the Brights Pike Bridge Project in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and twenty-three cents.
Uh, this project, we are working very hard trying to get it closed out, this is a one-hundred percent uh state-funded project that is locally managed. This is part of getting the project closed out and resolved, we recommend.
Is there motion to accept the recommendation?
I make that motion.
Motion. Here, I'm used to hearing you speak up here, I mean, I was looking at you. Another motion, bye, listen to him out here. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. That motion carries. We have a couple of uh, uh, council appointments, vote for it to the library board. Uh, one is the uh, a reappointment, the term is expired from Kevin Smith, Kevin has agreed to uh, certain of the term that is nominated by the council, is there a nomination?
Remember we nominate Kevin Smith.
Nomination for the center. Second, any additional nominations? Hearing done, let's vote. Kevin goes back home, we thank you for your service and the, uh, we have council appointment to the same board uh, to fill the unexpired term of Kline Belsom, uh, this will run through June first of next year. Uh, Mike Reed, the contact that is willing to serve on the board if he is nominated by the council, uh, is there a motion to nominate by? So, question Smith, do we have a second? Second, we do have a second.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Who's the other one, they don't want to go back down? Or did he, he has sent his script?
He, he resigned from the board.
Oh, he did, okay, all right, and thank you for the vote, okay.
Any other nominees? Hearing none, let's vote. Would like us all to fill out the term, we appreciate both of them for their willingness to serve. We have uh, three entry-level officers of the police department, Chief Overholt.
Thank you, Mayor. We're requesting backfill three new level positions within the police department. You have the current roster, even package from that roster. A self-service regulation with two from the top seven names, I'm prepared to make recommendations for those positions you need.
If you want to make all three up at once, is that okay with council? Go ahead.
Those three that we would recommend will be James Cole, Joseph Sutton, Matthew Hill. That recommendation would be cleaning the place of all pre-existing requirements.
Chief Overholt recommended James Cole, Joseph Sutton, Matthew Hill. Uh, is there a motion to accept those three? Motion Bivens, do we have a second? We have a second, any questions, Chief Overholt?
Chief, do any of these have experience? Are, are these all new ops?
New.
Brand new?
What was that hill guy's question? Matthew. Matthew, thank you very much, Chief.
Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. Those three are approved, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
And we come to the city administrator's report, Zoe.
I have a few things that we need to bring to the floor tonight, but the first one is, as indicated on your agenda, there are line item plans first for three funds that are part of the uh closeout of every year as we prepare for closing the books and getting uh, prepared for the auditors. These are smaller things than what you considered earlier under the uh, major changes that are allowed to be adjusted by, by staff level of the law to report at U N S point of report to the seat. Uh, another part of the uh, year-end process that, that was dealt with earlier in the finance committee is the production of the annual debt report, you have a copy of that report before you. Uh, as I indicated earlier, this is a comprehensive and high-quality report to give by staff. This was particularly, took a lot of time and effort in making this report available to you. Uh, there are a number of things that are worth noting in this report, but one is that we maintain our double A bond rate. Another one to, to bear in mind is that we will retire the uh two thousand eleven capital outlay note in two more years, so we're getting ready to uh, to put that note to rest. But overall, the report shows your uh, your debt as well as the debt for Moorestown Utilities that we guarantee. Hopefully you get a chance to look at that and see that uh, we continue to have high-quality financial management, good debt management, and I think you'll be proud of what you see when you spend some time at that report. Uh, on Saturday, we had a very happy dedication of Jolly Park. Uh, it was a, really a great day for our community, a very generous donation from the Jolly Foundation. Uh, I especially want to thank Commissioner Brad Turner for making the trip to Nashville to, to join us for that celebration and we definitely appreciate his participation in the event. As you've already seen from uh, previous action in this agenda, we are working very hard trying to move forward with the federal projects from the ARCA funds. Tonight, we've already touched on the water tank, heat citations, and city seminar renovations. Look for more in the next month or two in terms of projects that we'll be putting out for bid and getting services coming in, trying to do our best to utilize the, the good construction months of the summer to get many of those things accomplished. Uh, you'll also note that we're continuing to make good progress with industrial development. The resolution you approved earlier to uh, seek a T-DOT funding for road improvements in the uh, progress center shows that we are, are doing a good job of continuing to market our community, I think that uh, with this road with some, some continued work by the Industrial Development Board and the Chamber of Commerce, we'll be seeing some very positive announcements in the next couple of months. We continue to grow our community, create jobs, and this summer I think we'll see new industries in Moorestown. That's why I'm for it.
I don't think those final accruals come through on the grant.
Those are the, the money for the uh, for the stormwater projects and the water projects has to flow through the state. Mike Howard Chuff has made that application, uh, we expect to be approved, we have talked to him, we feel like we have a good application, but it's not yet.
It's been taken by T D, that's right. Well, I wish, I think there's a lot of conversation about Brad and Harvard, you know, it wasn't fast.
Uh, at this point in time, they continue to remove some of the major timber joists that are in there. They are continuing to look at the uh, the demolition of that building. There has been some interest from some other buyers, but at this point, nothing has been, been resolved. We fully expect that the, the credit card will come down.
May, may I ask about the um, line item transfers there? Because it's a line item transfer, it doesn't require a vote, all that money is staying within the budget and is allocated in different spots, and there's some I want to talk to you about later, not now. But then I asked for, you provided the memo on unspent salaries and benefits.
That's right.
And that came through, uh, this. So how much that year is on?
Uh, I think that was.
Uh, and this was, I think we're. Yeah, so that's, I think, I think we'll probably. At one point forty, and mine is rounded up to one point five, that'd be easier. I didn't have to be so, so, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Your sta- un, unused salary, unexpended salary.
Unexpended salary, we gave you the report, I don't have it in front of me, I didn't.
Well, okay, that's what, what I was. When we have budget amendments to show how this has been used.
That is included in the budget that you can just pass on first reading. That is what we utilize, it's gone down to the fund balance for the capital. And, and the main payments of the fund balance that the target of the future use salary.
And our fund balance remaining is?
At twenty-five percent expenses.
And it's down, we can take it down to what, fourteen, fifteen?
That is within your policy.
So, in other words, we didn't have, I guess my question, not, I don't guess, my question is, we didn't, staff decided in the budget process, the budget book that you presented us where this money would go.
We made a recommendation, yes.
Okay, so we are not going to be receiving any budget amendments to close out this year then? We, I mean, it's been taken care of with the utilization of these monies allocated to the budget and line twenty-two, twenty-three, and then for the line item transfers.
The line item transfers and the ordinance you passed on first reading, it will have to be passed on second reading after a public hearing.
So this is, I'm just saying, usually we have some budget limits at the end of the year, this year not.
Well, that's what you approved earlier.
In the budget.
No, and what is it, line? Pass that ordinance.
We approved it earlier in the agenda, just a few minutes ago.
N B one. Oh, N B two.
Is it nine B two?
Yes, it is, ordinance.
Yes, nine B two. Nine B two. It's a budget amendment ordinance. So that's the. For this fiscal year. And that's the only budget amendment we have this year.
We, as prepared, we have all the funds within one minute. In the past, sometimes we've broken them out into separate funds for clarity, but that is what we will need to do for this year.
And that's what I miss it, is the fact that it was separate before, and this time it's all locked together. And this is the only one we'll have this year. That's my question. Thank you.
We open the floor now for communications and comments about topics that are not on the agenda. This is an item we have kept on our agenda for the last several years that was added, and it is a discussion of items which are not on the agenda, the items that folks, the two subjects you wish for council to hear. You have three minutes to speak, identify yourself, and name and address, the floor is open.
I have a petition, pre-petition before my petition of the three minutes.
Identify yourself, my name and address, sir.
Yes, sir, but I have a petition to ask for first, if it's possible. I would like to talk about my arrest steam from the problem from the problem. But.
Why don't you take that message?
Forgot about that.
And you identify yourself by name and address.
Sure, I have a pre-petition before my petition, regular petition.
Just tell us your name and address and then start, can you do that, please? That's all you gotta do. It's the way we do it, you know.
Guys, guys, just letting you start, go ahead, Louis.
I would never mention about my arrest one more time. I would never mention it one more time if I can just ask you guys to allow, to make a small petition, pre-petition related to the petition.
Roll clock. Go ahead, go ahead, Louis.
Okay, so that means it's not, all right, I already prepared for that. All right, my name is Louis, and I live in Moorestown, east First North Street. I was arrested by the police on the twenty-second of April, and I have stated the reason, and then the mayor at the end just twisted again to make my, make me sound like someone crazy, break the law, but I did not. But I want to make sure, and I always want to give a benefit of doubt to anyone, even some of the council members on this board. But after the arrest and last Tuesday, I was go to the court. And that, that confirmed how stupid I am ever give anyone a benefit of doubt in order not to be charged. I have to agree with three items on the disposition. The first one is the city allowed Mr. Chan to remove the red tape that I caused on the March, I mean, April twenty-second. That's the reason I was arrested. They allowed me to take down the red tape and mow the lawn within the red tape. How stupid. Second, the city agreed that Mr. Chan can attend the public meeting. Do you mean that you can make me not exercise my right? Third, Mr. Chan agreed that he will not threaten or harass any city employee. This one is not the original wording, but I can accept that. Let me give you the original one first. The original wording was that Mr. Chan will promise, more or less like that, would not approach the city's employee if it's not necessary or unless it is actually necessary, something like that, both sides for the same meaning. I cannot accept that because I do not know what it is necessary or not. Because necessary or not, in my mind, there's two different things. One is intention, second is efficiency. Intention, I will always know that I have a pure intention and clear conscience. I will never have any problem. With, with, on efficiency, I will never know. I came to United States as a fast boy. The first thing they teach you is go to the kitchen, get up, bring something with your hand. So I prefer to take the not necessary and completely ridiculous, not personally harass any city's employee. Because in my mind, I have a clear conscience, I never act like that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I don't mean to like that, I'm sorry.
Anyone else wishes to be heard? If not, we will close this portion of the meeting, and there are go-to any comments from here or council members. The floor is now open.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to suspend the rules and to add one other thing to our agenda, and that is to, because of this kind of harassment that the city has received, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the comments at the end. Everybody has a council member that they can call and talk to, they have a council member at large. Every council member would be willing to talk to any citizens of our community, and I'd like to see us suspend those, and I make that a formidable motion. The ability to talk after the meeting.
Well, let's maybe clarify that again. In order to change that agenda, it requires the preparation of an ordinance for council to. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that's my.
Do we want to think this one through until the next meeting, or are you confident that you would want to do the same?
We could.
We get a little.
We could hold that off, but I'm getting tired. I'm getting tired of that. That's ridiculous. You were held in contempt of court, you were charged, you were charged for doing that, you needed to accept your punishment, go on. If they gave you an opportunity to not have those charges, but if you would agree to those things, you didn't have to.
Contempt of court?
I'm talking, okay? I'm talking now.
You, I, I.
I'm talking now.
I respect it, I will shut up, but please give me a chance to clarify.
Mr. Chan, you had your three minutes, okay? This is, this is the way this, folks who have three minutes to speak, and the council have their time to respond, and this is what that time is. Okay, so let's go to scrub.
There has got to be, and I'd like for our.
Yes, sir, I respect your, what you said.
I would like, I think our council needs to look into the idea that, yes, people have an opportunity to speak and come before this council and talk about things, but to bring this up for now, over almost a year, and it be the same thing and the same ridiculous statements that are being made, we should not have to listen to that kind of abuse. And I'd like for council to look into that before we have our next meeting.
Any other comments for any other council member?
Yes. I believe the trail at Fulton Hill Park, the trail through the woods is completed. There may be some finishing touches that they want, and I've been walking on it since it started building, and it's a very nice trail, and I suggest that you all walk there and enjoy that part of the park. And I don't think that many folks know about it. I spoke to the newspaper today that they put something in the paper that would notify the citizenry of Moorestown. That part of the park is open and to be used.
Any other comments?
Like you say, I respect you, Mr. Councilman Pentagon, or your concern about how council is approached. And I will say that over the years, I have received my share personally, not just as a whole council, but personally from the public who has stood before us. And I sincerely do not think that we need to take that right away, and I will not vote for that. I think that what we probably need to do is to educate individuals and talk to them individually and not publicly about their way that they want to approach council, but I will not vote for something that takes that right away.
That's fine, Council Lady Center, but it is my opinion that Mr. Chan is just simply wanting to hear himself talk.
Yeah, I'd like to make one comment on that. I understand where you're coming from here, I understand it. And we can't rely on innocent people coming up here to talk. But is there any action that determines the manner they speak? Any law partners that currently might know that? I mean, there's.
Well, I guess offensive language and offensive behaviors in the item of a homer, and would have a variety of definitions, but if, you know, it's, it can be from how we would screen it, but the other end of that is just, just toughen up for three minutes, and then when he's done, he's done.
It would be hard to, where the court case is, there's free speech.
Well, remind council that we have a work session following this one, and we're going to cover the budget items again, and if there are no other items to kind of hold council, I'm going to take them over here.
Let me mention one thing, coming in on a positive note. If any of you bump into downtown, we've got Cruz Farms down there now, serving ice cream, and God, every time you go by there and you see a large crowd outside, well, most of it is outside, I think they have a drive-through too, but.
They do.
But it, it's really a plus for our downtown area.
If you come, kids in life, he'll let you get in front of them.
He's fine.
The one who got screwed, we always got screwed.
Let's, let's begin this work session. Council members, the last time we discussed on this, we were going through questions from budgetary distribution. Who wants to go first?
Hey, I'd like to bring up the part-time pay that we've been talking about for three plus years. And we have a couple of memos that everybody received, one from Tony on the twenty-seventh, and then we sent out another one last Friday, Julie Gert with a caption from assistant, Mr. Ellard. And I find it really, and I, and the writing response was to my response back to Tony's original one on twenty-seven, is that for twenty-five thousand dollars, five hundred, twenty-five thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars, we can raise our part-time people to eleven fifty an hour. And in fact, that's a revelation to me, that we've taken three years to come to that utopic life in the distance that says we can do this, and this is damn out we can do it. So if we can do that for twenty-five thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars, I would like to recommend that we not only do eleven fifty, that we go to twelve fifty, which is, and I talked to Mr. Ellard about this, that's incremental, and that would be fifty-one thousand, one, uh, zero, twenty-six, so that's two thousand one thousand dollars, fifty-one thousand twenty-six dollars, sorry. So that would bring all your part-time people to fifty-one, I mean, to that amount. Your gym assistants were added in there by Tony on the twenty-seventh, and the gym assistants who are currently, have been making eleven twenty-five, which I was not aware of, they were even making eleven twenty-five, and their job is to assist when the city, city recreation department is using. As soon as that correct? Whenever they're monitoring, what's going on here?
Typically, school officials, they add for the school gyms, it gets to the monitoring, first grant programs at school.
And the city has been paying them eleven dollars. Eleven twenty-five, and their job is totally different from the park maintenance people who are outside, who are making ten dollars. And these people inside are making eleven twenty-five. But if we want to bring everybody up to twelve fifty, and it will take eight hundred dollars to raise the gym assistants, eight hundred and three dollars to raise the gym assistants to eleven fifty, somebody might need to check these figures, but then my calculation is that to bring everybody up to twelve fifty would be an additional four thousand twelve dollars, which would equal fifty-nine thousand thirty-eight dollars, which is, we just approved this order over here for forty-nine thousand dollars to add paint and a room and a dust wall and add lights. This is an investment in people. They're paying the same amount for bread, milk, and eggs as we are. And I would, I would recommend that we add enough money, forty-nine thousand thirty-eight dollars, which is inclusive and includes all the associated taxes, correct, in that figure?
Twenty-five thousand five hundred included. A dollar fifty raised plus taxes for them to do, but another hour.
hour.
So am I doubling that to fifty-one thousand, twenty-six, raises to twelve fifty, correct?
Double that, take twelve, twelve fifteen, thirteen.
Well, if it's, well, whatever it takes to go to twelve fifty then, I mean, if, if you can go from ten to eleven fifty, which is a dollar and a half, and it only takes twenty-five dollars and five hundred and thirteen, twenty-five thousand, five thirteen, you don't double that to get to another dollar fifty?
Another dollar fifty from?
From eleven fifty. Oh, I'm sorry, to twelve fifty, twelve fifty, eleven fifty, twelve fifty, no? What do we need to, what are the figures?
What are the figures?
What, what would it be to go to twelve fifty then?
Help, help me understand something. You've been pushing for eleven fifty from ten dollars an hour for a couple of years.
But nobody ever told me.
And then, well, and then you got your math, and your math, they got your math corrected and squared away here to what it was, now you want to go to twelve fifty. What, what's the justification for that, or why that particular amount? And we're getting ready to do a pay study anyway, we're all, I think we're in agreement to eleven fifty an hour, now you want to change it to another dollar an hour, is that, what's the logic there?
The logic is, we can, what, what is it going to cost then to go to twelve fifty?
Forty-two thousand, five hundred, five hundred, ten, twelve fifty, for the, for the part-time, part maintenance assistant.
Which they would?
Forty-two thousand, five hundred.
Five hundred. Ten thousand less than I counted, okay? And so what would it be to bring those gym assistants from eleven twenty-five to twelve fifty?
Uh, you said four hours.
So we're talking about forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Correct, close to? Which is again, ten thousand less than I, I calculated. You have to check. Okay. My, my, my thing here is, and I know Tommy's gonna say I'm a, I'm a record, I had been talking about this for three-plus years, and why? The revelation is, why didn't somebody put the pencil in staff, put the pencil to the paper and say, "We can do this for this amount of money"? Why did we have to drag it out and not address it, put it in the pay study, the ladies came back and did not address, they came out, they hired two people, and we shared them among the departments? And then we put it off, we, we folded it into the master plan for parks and recreation, and that was put off until the presentation. And then I asked a question, and all of a sudden, there's this light bulb that goes on, and this memo that comes out and says, "Wait a minute, we can do eleven fifty for twenty-five thousand dollars of five hundred and thirteen cents." In the scheme of things, that's less than what we're spending upstairs on this change work, it's on people. It is on people, it's an investment in our employees. And we all know that what's happening is a lot of our people are going to other places because they can make more money. And we're giving our people five percent, everybody else in the city is getting, all the way from top down is getting five percent.
There are a few things that, that probably need to be identified. Previous conversations with the preparation staff, they've been unable to identify the number of hours of work. That's part of what's been refined, what we've made this, uh, this recent calculation is we've actually found out the hours the people are working and what they're doing. That made for significant change from the initial estimates that were given by Parks and Recreation. We've also been trying to look at other ways of managing our staff, considering the possibility of using full-time people opposed to part-time people, so we could retain people, give them benefits, and then be more productive in our operation. That's part of what's been going on for the past three years. I think too, you need to note that the, uh, the memo that we've made recommendation, we did provide additional recommendations for, that we provide the, uh, cost of living adjustments in the future for these part-time people, and that we provide an additional allocation to allow for some flexibility to convert those part-time people to full-time people. In just the last two weeks, we've been able to add two additional, two or three additional full-time people that were originally going to be part-time people, and better provide the services to the department. I think that's been part of the frustration we've had over the, the course of trying to get to the bottom of this answer, is the lack of understanding and proper management of the department.
I, I think it's a matter of mayor. I really, it obviously comes down to mayor.
Well, yes, except for you have to know what question you're asking, and that's been the fundamental problem, is not understanding your own program to make the, to do the, the math equation.
Well, nobody ever said that early on, before the master plan or anything like that. I just think that it is, and, and how long are we gonna take to go to these full-time people that you're talking about? We're, we're looking, and I know, Mr. Peggy, I said earlier that, and I think, uh, had pay study, implement something now, and then come back after the pay study and see what they have. Well, we're gonna put in eleven fifty until, is that a recommendation or suggestion?
That was my consideration, yes.
Okay. And what's ten fifty versus eleven fifty? What?
A dollar.
And it's a big dollar in a lot of people's pockets. It is. And you know, some places, TML and the bond fund, here, for three years, since two thousand eighteen, the head, the leadership in the bond fund has not taken a pay raise. And that took a pay cut in order to allow the, uh, the employees to have, have raises that they wanted to get them. And this year again, bond fund and the TML, a brush line is not taking a pay, a increase.
What does that have to do with us?
I'm just saying that people are looking at their employees, and, and I really think these are people, uh, and we have these plans, Tony, in the interim. We can do this.
I've been glad to go with the recommendation of our city administration and its staff, uh, as opposed to a council member who wants to add a dollar here and a dollar there to payroll, I, I'm more inclined to follow pay studies that we have done that will make those line up correctly. I have, I, I'm not too little on what you're saying, I'm just saying I'm, I'm putting faith in our administration.
It's not a dollar here, it's not a dollar there, it's a dollar in the pocket of part-time employees.
Let me, let me, part of, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up in my next meeting, I'm into, I just, just live my life. But what, what I would like to see us do, and I think this is what everybody's really wrestling with, is a pay increase, but we're also spending a lot of money doing a pay study to affect the whole system. I would like to see us, and, and I don't care to make this recommendation, let's raise everybody up to twelve fifty until the pay study is complete, and then that pay study will dictate where those people ought to be. If that means they go back to twelve, they go back to twelve. If it means they go and stay at twelve fifty, or go to thirteen, that might be your recommendation. What I'm really looking for under this pay study is that these people, that we pay enough to get a true dedicated pay study to take care of our pay situation for the next few years, and not allow, and I don't mean to be saying this about any department, but not allowing any department to change that pay study by adding little things here and there to make more money for their employees. The pay study should be what we use to pay our employees, not decisions of the council or even this decision to the department heads. It should be the pay study and the administration that allows us to dictate where the pay study should be. So it'd be my recommendation that we go ahead until the pay study's completed to give part-time people a raise to twelve fifty.
Instead of eleven.
Instead of eleven. Uh, my discussion with this, some of the city administration people, that it could probably be done. If we're only doing it until the pay study's over, then we'd, then readjust it at that time.
Let me say, I think if we're gonna do a pay study, we need to use the pay study, or we don't need to pay for pay studies.
Exactly right.
And we need a different company?
Well, that, yeah, that, that's debatable, but, uh, but if you want to pay to get this pay study, and I don't, I, I understand what you're saying, Tommy, but I hate to give somebody something and then take it away from them.
I agree.
I don't think your pay study's gonna come back.
Oh, I know.
No, it's not.
Well, it's not clear.
Because look what people come, and McDonald's is paying twelve dollars, and Cook Foods is paying sixteen dollars an hour, and more, if, if you, if you're on time and, and you're not absent.
That would be, you force better than waiting.
Um, you tell me.
Fifteen dollars.
Yeah, there are only reasons, I can, and I say that it goes down, goes up, whatever. I'm just saying that we don't dictate, we let the pay study tell us.
Yes.
That's, that's why I'm saying, whatever it is, we follow the pay study.
Yeah, I'm just agreeing, you give somebody something, and it's hard to take away.
Well, I think we're setting a, a situation there with twelve fifty as it being the mental weight, you see? I'm trying to get with something, yeah.
Let me make an observation, we had one part-timer leave because he had a better offer, that was presented during the master pay plan, or master plan. We immediately tried to, uh, see if that person would fit into the currently vacant full-time position. It was management decision that that person could not perform the function. We had a person we lamented losing, but we wouldn't put them in a position with full-time hours and benefits. So there are management decisions along the way, some of the people we got are, are buying people, but they're not able to perform some functions, we need to operate the department.
Then you, you set your salary, and then you do your job on imploding all departments, where you evaluate your employees, and if you get any department, and that's up to you on the head to make sure that your employees have that money.
And that, I think that was, we, we lamented losing a good man, that we didn't provide an opportunity for the work, because he wasn't able to do it, and that, that's true and sad, but that is, he's taking a full-time job with, with the profit.
I'd like to add another thing to your list, Tony. I, I think the COLA, and that part-time employee will be, uh, eligible for that, and that's not just here, that's, that's not something new, that's, well, it's new and it's being folded in other cities and other places where they're automatically included in the COLA.
That's, that's common, yes.
Right. And I think that was part of the master plan or recommendation there too. Uh, I'd like to add in the Christmas bonus, we had, and I thought, you know, at Christmas, we, we had talked about a two-hundred-dollar bonus, and then it was thought that the employees had been getting the Christmas bonus, but we checked back to twenty seventeen, and we gave them the fifty-four dollars and seventy-six cents this year, but that was a first.
Michelle, I don't remember those Christmas bonus amounts, do you?
Um, I don't remember, I believe we gave them the same thing that full-time folks were getting.
That was the fifty-four, seventy-six, okay, but turkey ham.
Right, that's, that's, my recollection is that we gave the equivalent of it.
Right, right, and I would like to include that in your bullet points, uh, on your twenty-seventh, your suggestions going forward for part-time people, I would like to include that so that they are included from now on in the Christmas bonus.
And that includes what?
Your part-time people.
The gym supervisors and everyone that works any hours.
You're the one that added in the gym supervisors, I'd never heard of them before, that they had been making eleven twenty-five, that's why we had been, because we had only been talking about ten-dollar people, ten-dollar an hour people.
And you don't want to include the officials and the, those people who are paid by contract? They're paid by contract.
Are they, is that a part-time contract?
They, they are paid by contract, they are not part-time employees.
I'm talking about part-time employees, that's what this is addressing, part-time employees.
I, I stand by my recommendation that we go to twelve fifty until the pay study's completed, and I would strike the reduction if they go down because it's not gonna happen, but, um, I, I don't think we ought to be getting in right now to, um, anything else, COLA or anything else, let the pay study do that. We don't need to be deciding on COLA.
No, it's just that's what Tommy had recommended.
Right.
I, I thank you very much, Mr. Peggy.
And we say, uh, we're gonna continue to have part-time people, or we're looking to take those part-time jobs and make full-time out of?
I think...
That's what...
I think a lot of that need for part-time people, uh, yeah, there's some times a year, like right now, it's, it, the budget allows for, and there's a lot of work to be done, and we can make, really great opportunity to hire a couple of people of full-time right now, that's not gonna be the case at every point along the road, you know, group count of the year.
And some of our part-time work year-round, correct?
Yes.
Right. They're not just, we have the seasonal part-time and the, I call it full-time part-time there, but they're part-time. Permanent part-time. Because of the levels that we give them, they do not qualify for anything else, they don't have insurance or anything else. Now, the county, and I'm not asking for that, but the county does a program, and they have offered this to library staff, which is part-time, right, Deborah, uh, that they can buy in and use pay, and then the, and use the clinic.
They can use the clinic.
Right. And they can have six visits, I think, maybe eight.
There's a program to allow them.
Well, let's rest, rest those...
All right, let me go back and recap, so, so far we have added a thousand dollars to the private pattern, and we are increasing, uh, all part-time people to twelve fifty an hour, which is an amount we calculate to, to, to add the increased cost, that, that's what we've discussed before.
The part-time pay, the gym assistants.
Which are, okay, the part-time.
Is there some distinction between gym assistants and part-time, or is that just...
All the gym assistants have, have it be part-time, it's just, I think in our earlier conversations about part-timers, we're focused more on those part-time, main, part-time maintenance assistants.
Who are making ten dollars.
Correct.
Anybody, anybody else do any of these things?
The other thing we talked about earlier in finance was the appropriations of three-hundred twelve thousand dollars in a month. So as I stand now on my score sheet, I've got three adjustments. Thousand dollars for the, for the pattern, part-time pay, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the apartment.
And I have, I have one, I have a question, um, we have put, I think, is it three hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget to look into a fire station on Thompson Creek?
That, that was designed for, for the station, yes.
Right. Um, and I would like to know how many acres are going to be associated with the building of that, with that station, and where that station will be placed.
That is part of the, the study that the designer gives.
Okay. And my question, then, I'm sure you know what it's leading up to, is that gonna be on park property?
It is not on property currently used as a park. I think there's always been some conversation about sitting on property, whether or not that is park property, in my mind, it is not park property.
And I think you're probab, I, you know, that was purchased, I can't remember how many acres it was from my family, uh, that had, there was a trailer park there, and we bought that twenty-something years ago, and if there's a question that needs to be resolved, is I don't think it was really folded in as part of Frank Larrinque Park, but it is associated with the park, it has never been utilized as, as park property, correct?
It's adjacent to the park.
Correct. We just need to clarify that, because then that comes into conversion. Do you have an idea, mind, how many acres you're looking at there?
I believe not. Uh, yeah, I don't think, since it is not being utilized as park property, I don't think it is possibly considered a conversion. It appears to be twelve acres.
Twelve acres. And Thompson Creek is changed, and, um, and that's then, none of the road is going to go into, take any park property.
The discussion of Thompson Creek is scheduled for the seventeenth, and I can give you much better details, we have engineers here in the pictures, and I'll show you everything we've got today on the seventeenth.
But it can't, it's not going to take any park property, correct?
I believe the station was, uh, one square, and that's been, we could, we could continue.
I'm sorry, I just need to be reinforced on that. Yeah, so is the station on the left or the right of Thompson Creek? Is it on the...
Where are you headed?
Well, it's, it's on the west side.
It is on the park side of Thompson Creek.
On the park side of Thompson Creek. If we can just make sure where that property is. Mayor, I don't need to have an extra work session on the, on the budget.
Thank you. Thank God.
And, and, and Steve was referring to three changes that have to be made at base and rate today.
The only thing is that we have, since that, we, we know ahead of time before that money is drawn down or allocated, the three that's bound to be...
But there's no question that it can be put in budget then?
Correct.
Okay. We will prepare and amend the budget ordinance for second reading, and have those, those three things come out.
Thank you, sir.